Thank you so much for being a part of that journey with us.
Next, we're just going to talk about some of the things that have happened so far this school year at West Mifflin. So, one of the first events we had over at Clara Barton was called the Grand Event. The students can pick somebody special to them. It's their grandparents, their neighbor, relative, whatever they choose, and they get to bring them to lunch. They enjoy their own lunch, and then the parents also can join in. And we had a little pudding parfait for them, and the kids were really, really excited to tell us who they brought. We've got some pictures in the cafeteria. The next event we just did last, just a couple of days ago, was called Take Nutrition Global. And what we did is every month, we're going to feature a country, talk about the cuisine that's offered there, and give the students an opportunity to learn about different cuisines that we conserve. So, we did China on Tuesday, and we did a Mandarin orange chicken bowl. And you'll see in the picture right here, it was at the high school. So, the ladies got dressed up in their Food is Universal Language t-shirts. And we featured some literature, and the kids got to eat the Mandarin orange chicken bowl with some steamed broccoli. And we had some fresh veggies available as well. So, that's just two of the things we did in October so far. Next week, we're doing Italy at the elementary schools. They're going to have cheese ravioli, so that should be a big hit with the kids.
Are you doing France?
Um, I don't know if that's on there. Is France on there? Yeah, it is. It might be. If you'd like us to, yeah, we'll invite you. You can come to our French cuisine.
Next, looking at some numbers across the cafeteria. They are starting off very strong this school year, so students are responding very well to what we're offering. Breakfast and lunch are well above budget. A la carte is slightly below target but increasing, and we will continue to add menu items and plan exciting cafeteria events to increase participation. Then, looking at a new year, new tastes. Some ways we're going to enhance the school lunch program. We have some new menu items and some new nutrition education programs. Some of those new menu items include ramen noodables, chicken tikka masala, orange chicken, as Kira talked about. We had that last week, and the students really enjoyed that. And some new barbecue pulled pork, which is featured in a variety of recipes. And then, some new nutrition education programs include those Take Nutrition Globals, which will be featured once a month, Farm to Fork, Freaky Foods, and Planet Pals. So, we're excited to feature all of those this school year. Customer engagement and feedback. We really want to make sure the students have a voice in shaping their dining experience. So, we have some new tools to make sure that happens this school year. We are bringing back the old-school suggestion box in the secondary cafeterias. So, we have a new form called Food for Thought that they'll fill out and place in those boxes. And then, we have something called Food Fight, which is not actually us encouraging a food fight in the cafeteria.
No food fights.
It is a bracket-style competition where menu items will compete, and then the winner will be featured for a special day in the cafeteria. And we'll, you know, make a fun event out of it. And then, we have a new coloring page at the elementary level called My Favorite Food Tray, where they'll get to draw on that and fill out their favorite options and turn those in. And Kira will get to look at them.
And I get to try to figure out what they drew. Love the chicken nuggets.
And all of these will really help us improve the menus in the cafeterias and the overall service quality. And then, lastly, we have the new Buy American provision for the 25-26 school year, which we are required to comply with. So, no more than 10% of the foods purchased may be from non-domestic sources. So, with this, nutrition has implemented new tracking and reporting procedures to ensure you guys are fully within compliance. So, there may be some slight changes to the program, and those are all listed below here. But with these changes, we will ensure that there is the same quality and menu variety as always for the students. And that is all we have for this evening. Thank you very much for having us.
Thanks, guys.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have any gluten-free options?
Uh huh, we do.
Do you have two other gluten-free options, for chance or anything like that?
We do. We can provide them. We have a few students at the high school that we just kind of have a little reserve for them as well. But some of our menu items are just strictly gluten-free to begin with. Like, we have grilled chicken salads and stuff like that, so we do have some options available. Pastas, we can get a gluten-free variety, as well as bread and rolls.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem. Any others? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
And at this time, I'd like to call to order the West Mifflin Area School District Board meeting opening the West Mifflin Area Middle School Cafeteria, 81 Common Mall of West Mifflin, PA. Meeting begins at 7:02 PM. Opening exercise, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Arbiza, Grokow.
Ahern.
Here.
Blazevich.
Here.
Donahue.
Here.
Engler.
Here.
Gatus.
Here.
Kopec.
Here.
Yuhas. D'Scenzo.
Here.
Squires.
Here.
Item two, presentations, on soft.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just have one presentation this evening, and that is by our student board representative. May you please come up to the microphone?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
We just have a short report for our school, high school activities and clubs. So, regarding our senior class, this year, we moved semi to the school, the high school, in the auxiliary gym instead of the Georgetown. And it's going to take place on January 31st. And we got approved to decorate our caps for graduation with limitations. And then, for our art club, where they're planning on going to different Eden Park locations to paint windows for the holidays. Our student secretary just put down a deposit for a banquet, and there was a meeting this Wednesday, today. Or yesterday. Our PBIS program attended the Adderated Hate Student Summit in September to find ways to make the school a better place. And they plan to go to their first cultural exploration of the year. And our sophomore class is collecting money for the Cleveland Cavaliers game coming up this November. For student council, can you guys hear me? For student council, we are working on painting over the senior spots from last year so that the new seniors can paint them next week. We're also going to an outing at Trax Farm this Saturday. And we're also doing a fundraiser for breast cancer and our type shop. Sage Crew, we're helping with the fall play, which is called Murder on 1-5, oh, sorry, 5-1-8. And we're also planning on going to the musical Newsies. TLC Powderpuff was approved with being on November 25th. And we also are doing a Halloween event on October 25th. And then, NHS inducted new officers, and there will be community service opportunities. And they just selected their senior and junior reps. And then, eSports is hosting two events, the National Associate of eSports Coaches and Directors, and a Rocket League Tournament. That's all we have today.
Takes us to item four, hearing of the citizens' public comment. In order to take this time, the following must be met. Must be a West Mifflin Whittaker, Indian resident, current employee, or taxpayer. Matter must have been discussed through the proper education channels. Directed comments to the board president, handler superintendent, and remarks are limited to three minutes per person. Diane Stenesek.
Thanks. Diane Stenesek, 2803, Gleny Lane Extension. Couple things, on the payments on page for the business privilege tax and so forth for the $32,000, that was the commission. What was the total collection that warranted that type of commission? And the other thing is, we have those two memorandums of understanding. Yes, for folks to be using the facility. And I'd like to know if there is the cost for the usage of the facility and also security being used. I know last week, there was a mention that you could bring, have your own security, which I wasn't aware we were allowed to do that, or is it just for certain groups? But my question is, if some outside group is using our facility, and they have their own security, how do we know that they, that person, has the appropriate clearances to be on school property with kids?
There was only one group that was permitted to use their own security because they had to use police officers. That was the only way they were using the facilities. Any other ones who use our facilities, use our security.
And are they, is there an extra security person brought in that day? Like, when they have the basketball starting and that soccer starting so that you're not using the security that's supposed to be here monitoring the schools? That there should be an extra security person here for the outside event that's going on?
Those were scheduled after, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Oh, and if you don't let me know during this meeting what's in these memorandum of understanding as far as cost and security, I do have a right to know made out for it if I need to submit it.
What number do you want?
Which number?
Thanks.
Item six, board secretary's report, Mrs. Arbiza.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we have five items. Number one is executive sessions. Number two is minutes from September. Number three is the student board reps for the 25-26 year. Number four is a second reading. And then, number five is a first reading for policies.
Do I hear a motion for those items? Motion by Mr. Gatos. Second. Second by Mr. Donahue. Discussion.
I did want to say for our student board reps, in December, we'll have our reorganization meeting after the election, where the new board member gets more names. And we'll do something to recognize you guys at that time, too, and get you kind of a swearing-in ceremony. So, that's going to be on December 4th. It's a Thursday.
Donahue.
Yes. Okay, Rokal.
Ahern.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Gatus.
Yes.
Kopec.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Item seven, Director of Finance and Operations, for Mr. Weir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under A, finance, we have items one and two that were discussed during the work session as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Do I hear a motion?
Sum.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Donahue, second by Mrs. Ahern. Any discussion on the items? Rokal.
Ahern.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Gatus.
Yes.
Kopec.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Under B, purchasing and contracting, we have numbers one through four. One was on the agenda for the work session. Two through four were discussed during committee meetings. So, numbers one through four as presented under purchasing and contracting.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Do I hear a motion? Sum of motion by Donahue.
Second.
Second by board back. Discussion on the items.
I will just simply state that I don't necessarily disagree that these are items that we, you know, possibly need or that are completely outdated. I have an issue with the cost and the fact that, considering we don't have a budget pass in our political climate that we're in right now, I just can't see spending this kind of money right now.
I agree with that, too. Any other discussion? Rokal.
Ahern.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes, to be one, no to two, three, and four.
Gatus.
Yes, to one, no to two, three, yes to four.
Kopec.
Yes, all but B two.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Item eight, financial reports.
Before I move on to financial reports, if I may, Mr. President. We, on an annual basis, will resurface the gym floors. So, that's our main gym in the high school, the auxiliary gym in the high school, and also the middle school gym. We were not able to get quotes together until today. So, I didn't have the ability to put it on the agenda because we had to do that yesterday. So, I would like to let the board know that this is something that for the winter season and the use of basketball courts, we need to make this happen. We need to do it before basketball season starts. I'm sure Mr. D'Scenzo would tell you that's coming up quick. So, we're looking at the beginning of November to do this. And then, that would require ratification by the board. We did get three quotes, the lowest of which is under $15,000, the most expensive of which is over $20,000. So, I would like to go forward with the one that is under $15,000. We have done this historically in the past, just didn't have all the information and time to get it on the agenda for this evening. So, I'd ask if the board would be okay with ratification in November's meeting for this particular item.
Is this early? Is this early?
Yes.
Yep.
And Mr. Weir, this is something we can say.
Yeah, you're permitted to essentially pre-authorize this expenditure, and you'll be promoted to ratify it in November. Bear in mind, of course, that while typically the board approves expenditures, if you end up getting the work done before the ratification vote, and then we don't give five votes for it in November, you're still going to be on board. But again, it's a surprise.
So, at this point, this is an informal discussion. It's not exactly a vote. It's not something.
It's not a real vote. Mr. Weir is just looking for whether or not there's a majority of the board that is okay with moving forward on the basis that he's just right.
It's something we do every year, and it's budgeting board.
I'm on board with it.
Okay. Now, moving on to eight financial reports, we have letters A through F. I will say that under Tax Collector's Report, I had said that you would see the business privilege tax here. But it's not that because it was in October revenue, we won't see it until next month. That was over $1 million for the business privilege tax. That's what's causing the large $32,914 payment to legal tax for number nine, under number nine. And the reason the business privilege tax was that high is because they are now doing work in the borough for the Turnpike extension of Route 43. So, that's an expensive project. I will tell you that while the construction is still going on in West Mifflin, we will have higher-than-usual collections in business privilege tax. So, that's the reason for that. But anyway, A through F under financial reports as presented, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Do I hear a motion? Sum of motion by Mr. Donahue.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gatos. Discussion on the items. Looking forward to next months. Rokal.
Ahern.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Gatus.
Yes.
Kopec.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
And Squires.
Yes.
Item nine, invoices, bill table, purchase orders.
Under A, we have our general fund invoices. We have added the commission for the business privilege tax on number nine as discussed. And we also have Vashevik expulsion hearings. That is also in addition for number 10. Then, B, all cards and bills and purchase orders, cash dispersment. Dispersment reports that were in your folder as presented.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Donahue. Second by Mr. Gatos. Any further discussion here? Rokal.
Ahern.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Gatus.
Yes.
Kopec.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Item ten, district operations, Mr. Souls.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under ten, we have four items, A through B, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do I hear a motion for item ten?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Engler.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahern.
BBD International Academy, that is the soccer group that uses the stadium at $300 per use. And the Betis Plan Basketball League is a majority of West Mifflin residents to play basketball from 8:00 to 9:30 in the evening. They pay $200 per use.
Thank you, Mr. Souls.
And security?
Oh, and security is, as you already addressed, the security is provided by the district office as part of the MOU.
Yes.
And the fees.
Thank you.
Rokal.
Ahern.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Gatus.
Yes.
Kopec.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Eleven, superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under superintendent's report, we have items A through F, A being homeschool business report, B, student services, C, student activities, D, student fundraising, E, facility use, and F, conferences as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Engler.
Second.
Second by Blazevich. Any discussion on the items? Rokal.
Ahern.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Gatus.
Yes.
Kopec.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Item twelve, professional personnel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under twelve, professional personnel, we have items A through D as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gatos.
Second.
Second by Blazevich. Discussion on the items. Rokal for item twelve, A through D.
Ahern.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Gatus.
Yes.
Kopec.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Squires.
Thirteen, non-certified personnel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under non-certified personnel, we have items A through E, A being leaves of that, B, resignations and terminations, C, retirements, D, hires and transfers, and E, others as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Gatos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue. Discussion. Rokal.
Ahern.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Gatus.
Yes.
Kopec.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Item fourteen, athletic personnel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under athletic personnel, we have items A and B, A being resignations and B being hires as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do I hear a motion for those items?
Motion.
Motion by Engler.
Second.
Second by Gatos. Discussion. Rokal.
Ahern.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Donahue.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Gatus.
Yes.
Kopec.
Yes.
D'Scenzo.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Item fifteen, board president's correspondence. I have none this evening. Item sixteen, executive session discussion. We held executive session prior to this meeting. We discussed litigation and personnel matters. Seventeen, board reports. Do any committees, any committee chairs have anything they want to add from last week that wasn't discussed? I will say, the, under community communications and community engagement, we did get a report presented to the board tonight on some of the updates with social media and the website. That would really be insightful for us to see, and it's good to see the progress that's getting an A and the attention that's being given to that facet of our public relations. B, SEAL Center.
Just a little update here for our students at SEAL Center. Student of Month awards for September include Jakari Pendleton for advertising and design, Avdil Sintana for Odrigas for automotive technology B, Angelina Darty, baking and pest pastry chef, Christopher Nash for cybersecurity and networking technology, Jaleel Pendleton for cosmetology, Ryan Taylor for culinary arts, Trey Lomaditz for, or Maitz, for electrical construction, Bacon Johnson for sports medicine. Additional, some of the student organization updates. Skills USA students are prepping for Fall Leadership Conference from October 29th to the 31st. Leadership CTE students participate in a roundtable discussion with Laura Sahinky, the field director for Governor Shapiro, to offer their perspective on career and technical education. Just a quick renovation update. The main office is operational on the first day of school, and the new office furniture was installed shortly after. Collision repair has moved back into the finished program area, and welding is in the process of being moved back into its permanent space. Culinary and baking or wrapping up Culinary and baking are wrapping up. And the electricians have set the new generator for the powerhouse. Construction veterinary assistant program is set to begin later this month. Just to follow up to what I mentioned last week. The Steel Center has an open house. It's scheduled for Monday, November 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Anyone who's interested, it's fascinating the work that they've done down there. And if you're interested at all about the Steel Center and what our students are doing and are capable of, I suggest you try and make, make your way down there for the open house. It's eye-opening. They will have in August a, a grand opening once all the punch list items and everything are done. And just as a final, final note on Steel Center. They ended the year last year and celebrated seniors in welcoming 47 new inductees to the National Honor Society, bringing the membership to a record 69. It's been growing every year and it continues to grow. So they're doing a phenomenal job. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Item 18, solicitor's report. I have new reports tonight, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Lucas. 19, old business. Oh, I wanted to say this. Under the credits, Mr. Weir is one of them. And it says under the teachers' union agreements. You're obviously not a teacher, but that is included in your conditions for employment. Stay here, be first for those credits. Any other items under old business? 19 new business, or 20 new business, rather? 21, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern?
Second.
Second by Blazevich, needing adjourn.